Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Megan Aiken. The following is a piece of legislation to be heard by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 447. Ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2020 November General Election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article 2, Executive, be amended and supplemented by amending the language and adding new language to Section 229 and 230 to expand the powers of the Independent Citizens Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its original mandate, to investigate police misconduct, and improve police-community relations? That concludes the piece of the legislation up for discussion. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council for Cablecast Public Hearing on today, Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. We are joined with me today by Council President Teresa Kell Smith, Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Councilman Bobby Wilson, and Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. Good to have all of you with me today. And so, as always, we're going to ask that our clerk would read the number and title of the legislation.
Bill 447. Ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city at the 2020 November General Election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article 2, Executive, be amended and supplemented by amending the language and adding new language to Sections 229 and 230 to expand the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its original mandate, to investigate police misconduct, and improve police-community relations?
Thank you very much. Then we'll now move into our registered speakers. We appreciate those who are participating this evening. First up, I have LeBron Richer. Are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. After the June 1st incident, a new generation of young activists in Pittsburgh asked the question, "Who watches the watchers?" Many people my age did not know that we had an independent civilian review board in the city. June was the first time we learned about it. And I myself had to go back and study the massive referendum that took place to get it after the murder Johnny Damage. And I'm glad to know that history. And I think previous councilmen like Sala Houdin did good in fighting for it. But I remember I read that Tanya Payne, who would succeed him, debated the need for a CPRB at all, saying that if it's not doing its job, then we don't need it. And she won with the endorsements of the Fraternal Order of Police, coincidentally. But I think what Sala said in response to that is very telling because the Fraternal Order of Police litigated against that petition because I believe they were afraid of it. And I think although we do not want to have an antagonistic with the Fraternal Order of Police, we can't have a board that appeases them. And currently, under Beth Pittinger, it seems like the Board is doing that. A report by a public source released today said that of 3,000 complaints that went towards the CPRB, only 3% of those went to public hearing, the last stage. So I think we need to make the CPRB stronger than it was. And to do that, it has to have unfettered access to police data, including body cam footage, the power to bestow potential penalties if recommendations are not implemented, and effective up-to-date and easy-to-understand web presence that makes their findings accessible for general public. But especially an independent prosecutor for dealing with cases. I believe if Antoine Rose was, after his murder, I believe that we would have seen the justice that the killer deserved if we had an independent DA in the investigation and not Zappala. We need more power, and I don't think this bill goes far enough. So I hope the language is amended. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your participation. That brings us to Megan Colick. Megan, are you on the line? Megan Colick? No Megan Colick? That takes me to Marie Norman. I see Marie, Ms. Norman's on the line. Ms. Norman?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak about the amendment to the Home Rule Charter. I'm going to read my comments, so I'm sorry if it sounds a little stilted here. For decades, police departments have maintained that police must police themselves. Their jobs are so exceptional, we've been told, that they can't be accountable to outside organizations or to the public. But as the protests sweeping this country illustrate, the police have failed and failed utterly to police themselves. In fact, in many of us, the police have come to seem more lawless, out of control, and dangerous than most of the people they arrest. It is well past time to listen to the members of the African-American community in Pittsburgh who have experienced police abuses firsthand for far too long and whose demands for meaningful police oversight have fallen on deaf ears. Thus far, the Home Rule Charter has ensured that our civilian police review board is toothless and has no real power to curb abusive practices. We need meaningful police accountability and transparency if we're to restore trust between the police and the communities they're meant to serve and protect. So please vote for this amendment to the Home Rule Charter to expand the power of the civilian police review board and finally provide true public oversight to the Pittsburgh Police. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for participating. That brings us to Evan Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me? Fantastic. All right, so I am calling because I'm very concerned about the police, like everyone else. As I'm sure you all know, there was an FBI report a couple of years ago that white nationalists are finding their ways into police precincts. And I believe that if you're going to have an organization meant to keep us safe from the police, they should have the powers needed to make sure that people are not going, joining the police with the express purpose of terrorizing the communities they're meant to respect, to protect. As the City where Tree of Life happens, where we are not strangers to white supremacist terror, I think that it is egregious that we don't have a board capable of finding people who have joined our police with the express purpose of terrorizing communities. What happened to Antoine Rose has the same roots in what happened to Tree of Life. It is white supremacy. It is a danger to the people that you are meant to represent. And so, I would like to urge everyone on the Board to vote for more powers to CPRB. The people who spoke before me have said it all, but unfettered access to police data of all kinds, independent prosecution, employee and funding to conduct data-driven monitoring of the PPB, recognizing patterns of misconduct under a particular commander, and to keep track of officers' social media posts. If they don't have those powers, how are they keeping us safe? That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parker. That brings us to Anna Fisher. Anna?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Anna Fisher. I am a United States citizen, despite my accent. I'm also a resident of the Allegheny County. I live in Pittsburgh. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about this. I would like to just have a brief comment about my support of the referendum question about amending Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter to expand the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board. According to Quinn Cousins, an attorney at the Abolitionist Law Center who researched Citizen Police Review Board in 2015, the Board's inability to enforce its disciplinary recommendations makes it largely ineffective. And number two, police unions' pushback against the Citizen Police Review Board led the Board to start issuing softer recommendations. This state of affairs is untenable. I'm sure you're all aware that there is nationwide attention to excessive use of force by law enforcement in all of our communities, but particularly in black communities. Locally, we witnessed excessive use of force by law enforcement just a few weeks ago against peaceful protesters in East Liberty on June 1st. Citizens of Allegheny County should be able to voice their opinion on whether we want stronger protections against police misconduct. I would like for this question to be added to the referendum so that I can have direct input into this matter. Police misconduct is one of my top concerns at the moment, and I would value an opportunity to cast a vote for strengthening the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. And by the way, I love your accent. And so, we're also joined by Councilman Coghill. Anthony Coghill has joined us. That brings us now to Mary Young. Ms. Young, are you on the line? I see you.
Yes, I am. Do you hear me?
I hear you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Young, and I am a City of Pittsburgh resident. I fully support the CPRB, especially its independence. And this proposal, to me, actually has the potential to limit the Board's success, not enhance it. And for this reason, I'm opposed to this proposal to amend the Home Rule Charter. And I would like to highlight the reasons for my opposition. First, I believe this proposal actually limits the independence and discretion of the Board and does not expand its capacity. Second, I believe this proposal changes the purpose of public hearings from fact-finding to nothing but public information sessions. Third, the Board already compels officers to participate and testify at fact-finding hearings. The courts have enforced the subpoena power, which, by the way, I might add, had to be fought for in the courts in the first place. Fourth, opening the Home Rule Charter in this manner will take the power from the people who worked tirelessly to create this Board 23 years ago and gives it to City Council and the Mayor's Office. Fifth, I have a problem with this proposal being placed on the referendum in November by bypassing the traditional method of collecting electors' signatures. I believe the City Council and previous ones, and the Mayor's Office, have obstructed the work of the CPRB, and I wish they would stop and start cooperating with the CPRB. While I believe the intention may be noble, I feel the method proposed, it would be detrimental. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have on my list, and I may be pronouncing this wrong, but Shamon Puma Chak Ma Ya Ulahe. I'm not sure if you're online. I do not see you, so I do not think you're online, but I do want to call your name. The last registered speaker I have on my list is Tim Stevens. And so, we ask that, Mr. Stevens, it is your time.
Good to see everybody.
Good to have you.
And Reverend Burgess, thank you for the work that you did with many of us. Brandy Fisher and Big Valcheck, Citizen Police Review Director, Beth Pittinger back in 2010 after the Jordan Miles incident, which ended up in legislation. I think we ended the legislation, was it 2013? We had four pieces of legislation for progressive police legislation. We wanted to honor you for that. I just wanted to share a concern in asking if you, as the initiator of this and council in general, want to thank council for their work ongoingly, but I have a concern that I want you to think about. Sometimes, language, it's just like when you hear the term "defunding the police," I have a very, very strong reaction to that. And I've told people that. I say we could call it six or seven different things, but we're going to call it "defunding the police." But certain things are catchy for people versus reform, reimagine, whatever. In this case, language sounds good, but I'm concerned that maybe the result might be negative. It sounds good when you say in the legislation to expand the powers. The average citizen is not going to be against expanding the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its original mission. It sounds good. My concern is if something that is meant to be good may end up being bad in the sense of actually curtailing the Board's discretion and inserting a city's influence in a way that does not currently exist, which keeps the Board more independent. And also, it may impose new requirements on the chief, and the controller. So I'm concerned about the possibility of infringing on the powers of the Board versus the City of Pittsburgh. And I know that often when you hear Beth Pittinger speak about the Board, the first thing she says in a public meeting is the Independent Citizen Police Review Board. I think it's extremely important that we do, in the midst of all this going on on the streets and across the nation, that we do everything possible to strengthen the Board. So my request is that if all of you would get with Ms. Pittinger and her staff and their Board and make sure you're not doing something that actually does the opposite of what you want. And I would depend primarily on the opinion and wisdom of Beth Pittinger, her staff, and the Board, who is volunteer.
Thank you very much. The only registered speaker that I have that has not spoken and was not on the line was Megan Colick. Are you here now, Megan? Megan Colick? Seeing no Megan Colick, I will now entertain conversations from members, and I will do it, if you do not mind, I will do it. It's just easier for me to do it in the order in which I see you. And when I see, I see in this order Ms. Strausberger, President Smith, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle, and finally, Mr. Coghill. That's the order in which I see you on my screen, so I'll ask for your comments, Will, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your work in preparing this legislation, this resolution, and the behind-the-scenes work that went into this. I also want to thank the public commenters for taking their time out of an afternoon and evening to prepare comments and to make your voice heard on this. I really only have, I have a question, I guess, and that is, we often hear that any kind of citizens' review board of the police, not just in Pittsburgh, but anywhere, would be stronger if it had subpoena power. And I wonder if you, Reverend Burgess, can speak to your work in investigating that issue and whether, if you could maybe walk me through and walk the rest of us through, how you determined the language that you used here rather than any other kind of language that you could have used? So subpoena power is one potential for providing more teeth, if you will, more power to the CPRB. Why this legislation in particular?
Well, can I do it at the end? That way, or I can do it now? How do you want me to do this? I can do it now or do it at the end? Either way.
Either way is fine.
Let me, huh? Whichever way, I don't want to monopolize the time of other members wanting me to do...
I'm fine with other members making their comments first.
Okay, and I'll walk you through our thoughts. And next, President Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend, for convening this and for the public for coming out to speak, again, taking time in the evening to do so. I do have some of the same questions that I think Councilwoman Strausberger has in terms of the subpoena power, because it's my understanding the CPRB has subpoena powers currently, and that there's some things that they already do that's in this legislation. And so, I just want to know how you see it acting differently. But I also think that we should make sure that we're sitting down with Ms. Pittinger because she has been doing this for a very long time. And you know how I am, I just think we should just bring everyone together to try to figure it out. And I'm confident in the end, that's what you're going to end up doing, but I just wanted to make sure I put that out there, that I do have some concerns that, it's my understanding that they already have some of the powers that are within this legislation. So, that's it.
Okay.
I do ask you because I know you're trying to find results for the residents, so I want to thank you for that as well.
I think, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you for putting forward this legislation, and thanks to the public for their comments. Now, I've been reading the ones that come by email as well that are going to be put into the record, I believe. And I'm continuing to read through that and learn more about this. You know, I was very intrigued by the conversations that we've already had with Ms. Pittinger in recent legislation that we had at the table. And so, I'm looking forward to that conversation again because the more that we can involve, the more that I can have more conversations at the table so the public can hear what the current status of the CPRB is and how they operate and how that can be strengthened. And I think we're really looking, I think we're really looking for, you know, our end result is the best community relations that we can have with our officers in the public. And I think that's, I think that's most important for me and really understand how, you know, this accountability that has existed, you know, can work best to maintain that and do better. So, thanks.
I'm slow with technology. I'm getting there. Mr. Lavelle?
I'm actually in the process of picking up my children, so I will defer until later.
All right, Mr. Coghill?
Yes, Rev, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
You may be slow with technology, but you're warp speed compared to me, all right? So, listen, Rev, I'm not sure if I have an opinion on this yet or not. I just wanted to tune in and listen and hear everybody, what they had to say. You know, I appreciate your leadership. I've told you from the beginning, I think you're a good leader. And I'm committed to working with you and Councilman Lavelle on the legislations you have put forward, including this one. And just wanted to let you know that you've found me to be supportive. And one other question, who's Robert Lavelle? I've never heard of this guy.
That's R. Daniel Lavelle.
Oh, okay, got it, all right.
So hopefully, and I think, joy, Sean Carter is in the waiting room. If you could put Sean through, Sean is my assistant and the writer, the actual technical writer of the legislation, he'll be able to help too. If you could put Sean through and open his mic for me, that would be helpful. So let me talk to you generally how we came up with this process and share with you what our process is. So, we had, first of all, a couple of things. Let me respond to a couple of things that were said in public comment, then I'll answer Erica's questions directly. The Citizen Review Board, the reason that it was not created by council from the beginning was the council wouldn't do it. The reason that the council people of that time, Sala Houdin, they had to collect the signatures, is because the council at that time would not pass legislation to put it on the ballot. We don't talk so much about how our council has changed, but up until by district elections, this council was very hostile to issues concerning African-Americans. In fact, it was against by district elections. It did everything it could to stop African-American participation and expanded African-American participation in city government. And so, that's number one. We've done this before when we did the residency requirement. I think it passed something like 60, 70% back in the day. So, this is a power council has to put things by referendum to change the city's charter. It's just that we don't use it very often and that initially, we did not. Second of all, the Police Citizen Review Board is an instrumentality of the city. Even though it's somewhat separate, it is still an instrumentality of the city. That's why it has subpoena powers. Its powers is because it is an instrumentality of the city. If it was a completely independent organization, it would not have access to OMB or to any of the powers that the city has. It has to be part of the city in order to function. All right, so that's overall. Now, I'll give you the overall big picture, and then I'll let Sean give you the details. Overall, when we start thinking about doing this and talking to some legal experts, that was our first sort of conversation. After that, we went to Beth and began to talk about her frustrations of what she could see. We actually tried to do this earlier, a few years before. We actually tried to do something very similar, and the time wasn't right, the time we think is right now. So we, from the beginning, got sort of her view of what this could look like. And then, we, with help of some legal help and with Sean's capable hands, we crafted this. Then the next thing we did was give it to both the CPRB and the administration for their kind of concerns. We've been meeting, we've met twice with Public Safety Director and with the Chief of Police and with the Law Department. And so, the next thing we hope to do is get written feedback from both the CPRB, the police, and the Law Department, and then craft a compromise, similar to what we've done in the past, and, Mr. Lavelle, a compromise that all can agree with. And so, I hope to present to council soon a compromised piece of legislation that all three parties, the administration, the police, the CPRB, and council as a whole, can support. So it is my intention to all work together, as the President has directed me. I am actually doing that process very deliberately. We've been very deliberate in how we've done this. And so, the last piece will be back to council. So when I bring it back to council, though, for their final touch, you have the final say-so. I will make sure it has the support of all the other interested parties. And so, that's sort of my old big-picture thinking. So Sean can answer your direct questions about why the specific pieces are in there. Sean? If you can unmute him.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
For the sake of everybody watching, my name is Sean Carter. I am Special Assistant to Pittsburgh City Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. Thank you for having me. It's been a while since we've all been together. Specifically, what this ordinance initiating a referendum to amend the Home Rule Charter does, it does not change the authority of the civilian police review board to investigate complaints of police misconduct that are filed with it. What it does do is give a special emphasis to acts of police misconduct, which may be civil rights violations. be civil rights violations. Every act of police misconduct isn't a civil rights violation, but civil rights violations are usually rather serious acts of police misconduct. And we wanted to make sure that the board gave special focus to those incidents when they happened. It subjects all the citizen police review board meetings to the Sunshine Act, because as we're learning, the, the police review board, although the voters and the framers of the original amendment want it to be independent, and it largely is somewhat independent, it is still an instrumentality of the city. And so when it holds its meetings, they should also, just like city councils, just like the Planning Commission, the Human Relations Commission, should be subject to the Sunshine Act, which provides, which requires a quorum, which requires that they deliberate in public. But it also, there are carve-outs in the Sunshine Act for the CPRB to meet in executive session when they have to deal with confidential information. And that's an issue I'll get to a little later. It requires the controller to jointly perform performance audits of the Bureau of Police with the civilian police review board. Now, the city controller's office, they have lots of analysts and auditors, and they're good at doing the performance audits of government units. The CPRB has subject matter expertise on police departments and their policies and their practices and their procedures. And joining them together, as opposed to requiring the police review board to do it separately, will allow each to benefit from the expertise of the other. It will allow the police review board to kick the tires of the police department, because one of its missions is not just to investigate acts of police misconduct, but also to improve community police relations. And one of the more effective ways for them to do that is to audit the police department on a regular basis, not just when there's a problem, not just when there's an act of police misconduct, or the FBI shows up, or, you know, a situation like that. But it does, for the first time, require fiscal audits by the controller of the CPRB. The CPRB is funded with taxpayer dollars. And in that regard, they should be treated like every other instrumentality of the city's government. The public, everybody, including the public, has the right to know how these dollars are being spent. And so that was also placed in there. Currently, the CPRB does have subpoena power. It is conferred upon them on behalf of the city. As Reverend Burgess said, if they weren't a part of city government, even though it's not under the standard command structure where the mayor appoints the director and the mayor can fire, it is still a part of the city government, almost like the controller's Just lost my train of thought. So yes, they can, they can currently subpoena records, documents, testimony, but under the court cases, and I believe a public commenter was speaking of that, those records often come heavily redacted to the police review board. And when they subpoena a police officer to appear, they appear but never testify. And one of the things that the FOP brought up in 1997 was, if you force us to testify against our own constitutional rights in a public hearing, we'll never testify. And for twenty-three years, they have never testified. And so part of reconfiguring this, also if we go down to the confidentiality, is to require that confidential information be handled confidentially by the board. The board can handle some of its investigations in executive session, because that's legal under the Sunshine Act. And that will make it easier to begin getting these, getting the police officers to give statements confidentially, because under the law, their disciplinary records are private records. They cannot be publicly disclosed. You know, there's a Supreme Court case called Garrity, which requires that a public employer, if they compel a statement from a police officer, cannot allow for that statement to be used against them in a criminal proceeding. And so there's a necessity, if we truly want the CPRB to be able to do complete and full investigations and actually get the police officer's statements, we have to uphold their constitutional rights. And the Supreme Court said what those rights are. And to the extent that the board, as it was designed, doesn't permit that, doesn't tacitly require that, it's going to make it a lot more difficult to win on that point, when it ultimately goes to either bargaining or arbitration. And hold on, there's a couple more points. But in lieu of subpoenaing police officers to participate in the CPRB's proceedings, the charter amendment would require their participation or face termination, which is different than a subpoena. The subpoena power is not being removed from the board, because from time to time, they may still have to pursue to an investigation subpoena records or documents or other testimony or other records. And so Reverend Burgess did not want to remove that power from them. But having, having reviewed some of the court cases that the CPRB has been in against the city, in an attempt to enforce their powers, both under the charter and under the code, we're trying to correct some of the things that were missing from the 1997 amendment. And the reason Councilman Burgess opted to use an ordinance to initiate the referendum as opposed to going to collect the signatures is, when you circulate a petition for a referendum and get signatures, the version of the referendum has to be the version that goes to the voters when you start collecting signatures. If you need 12,000 signatures to qualify for the ballot, you can't collect, you can't draft your referendum, collect 6,000 signatures, decide you have to amend it because there's a problem with it, and then go to continue to collect more signatures, because the original signatures would then be invalid. So this process allowed for a lot more cooperation and participation from the Public Safety Bureau, from the public, from the council, from the CPRB, the administration, and other parties. Because this allowed for any necessary amendments that needed to be made, to be made before final passage, so that what passes finally doesn't require any amendments and is not legally unsound. And yes, there are, there are provisions in the amendment that require the CPRB to keep confidential information confidential, and if, if a staff person of the, of the board violates that, they could be fired. If a board member violates that, they could be removed, because the confidentiality has to be taken seriously. If there are any questions, I'm still here.
You're on mute, Reverend Burgess.
Ms. Strasburger, did we go, we answered your question? Do you have any other question? We're trying to walk you through our thinking and our process internally.
Thank you.
Did we answer your questions?
You did. That was very helpful. I'm just, can I just dig in a little bit?
Sure, of course.
And I'm also happy to have these conversations offline, because I think we probably should also, but I also believe in the, you know, the power of the public listening in on our conversations as well. So it's my understanding that currently, the, when a complaint is brought to the CPRB, that they seek mediation first. And then if one party refuses mediation, then they go through the process, that is more of a trial process. And that, the end result is that they then make a recommendation to the mayor and the police chief for any necessary disciplinary action. And I think that was the part that got me, that it's, even after all of that work, all of that subpoenaing, you know, and the, and the work that they have to put, that the board has to put into uncovering what might have happened, the end result is, is a recommendation.
Yes.
And I also am very keenly aware that we are limited in our powers in the city, that disciplinary action is, often goes to arbitration, and a three-member panel of arbitrators can challenge even a firing of a, or just other disciplinary action of a police officer, if that's necessary or if that feels warranted. And we've, there have been cases where we've had to rehire police officers because of that process, and that is a state-level policy change that we need to make happen rather than a city level. That said, though, I guess if you can speak to, it sounds as if you're working both to try to satisfy a lot of different parties here, but also make as much impact and give as much power to the CPRB as possible. And you, you definitively think that this is basically as much power as we can give to the CPRB?
So let me go, I'm sorry, let me go one step further. Not only does the recommendation go to the mayor and the chief, but they, some decisions were being made without them ever seeing the recommendations from the CPRB, that they would actually, O and B would make their determination, it would go to the chief and the mayor, and they would make determinations before even seeing the recommendations from the CPRB. That's really what I, that's really in essence what I'm trying to correct. I'm trying to make it a process where at the very minimum, the police chief and the mayor have the results of the CPRB in hand when they make their decision. Especially, if they make a decisions to exonerate an officer, right? If there's a problem with discipline, they must do it quickly. We understand that. But it's in the exoneration of an officer that we want to make sure they have the full weight of the CPRB's determination prior to making the exoneration, if that makes some sense.
And that does make sense.
That's, that's the area I was really, really laser-like focused on.
And that does make sense, and that leads me to sort of a different question of if there is a, we know of cases where there is the public demanding action, accountability, and the mayor and the police chief are under immense pressure to make a decision, disciplinary nature, quickly. This would not prevent them from doing that, you're saying? This would only be in the case of exoneration, that they would need to have the CPRB's recommendation?
Two answers. Sean will give you the more definitive answer, but they, remember, we are working with the Public Safety Director, the Chief of Police, the Law Department. We've had negotiations. So what you have is not the final form, but absolutely, one of our conversations was to make sure explicitly that the police chief and mayor have the authority to remove an officer if necessary. So that was a, that's a matter of, of concern for all of us. I guarantee you, and Sean will answer that more definitively, but we, that was part of our conversation, and absolutely, the final version will be ironclad, that it will not prevent that from occurring. Go ahead, Sean.
There are some acts of police misconduct which are so glaringly obvious on their face, and I can't point to one in Pittsburgh offhand, but we can look at what happened in Minneapolis with George Floyd, or what happened with Breonna Taylor in Louisville, Kentucky. The circumstances were so obvious, the evidence was so overwhelming, it was so uncontroversial, that there's basically no public policy reason to wait to take disciplinary action. And Reverend Burgess is committed to not restricting disciplinary action from occurring in those instances where it must occur.
Thank you both so very much for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other concerns or questions? If no other concerns or questions, let me assure the public that we're working at light speed. It is our intention to spend this next week, having worked out a final compromise, piece of legislation, and to bring that back for council, to give council its time to digest it, view it, and make any final recommendations, knowing that those recommendations would then have to go back to the Law Department and the police, because in my, in my view, this is a three-legged stool. There is the administration, the Law Department Police, there's council, and there's the CPRB. And I'm hoping to have a compromise that, that, that at least has the support of all three and then goes to the public. That's my, my intention. If there, if there's no other concerns, I want to thank everyone for participating. I thank members of council, and again, Sean and I are open for offline conversations of our thinking, or even, you know, early kind of peaks of what we think the revised legislation will look like. One of the things we know will be in it will be the role of the Public Safety Director. That's not in there now, but it will be in the, in the final form. And so we are working sort of around the clock to hopefully get it to you by next week. That's our goal. If there's no other questions, then I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, members.